Ms. Darrow.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Ms. Hannekin.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
All right, now I'd like to ask our council president, Dave Engel, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, after which I will say the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We are gathered here today to seek your wisdom, guidance, and courage and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in all the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Amen.
Amen.
All right, the number one thing on our agenda at every meeting is comments by the public. In order to make comments, we ask you to sign in, please. Tonight, we did not have anybody sign in, so we're going to move right into pending.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I inadvertently grabbed that sheet of paper. I think we should extend the hand if anyone wants to, because I took some notes down on it on accident.
All right, is there anyone who would like to speak, since we didn't have the sheet out there? Okay. Now, we can move ahead to pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number three dash two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number three, two thousand and fourteen, for its second and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
In ordinance repealing ordinance number three, two thousand and twelve, passed on February ninth, two thousand and twelve, which provided employee healthcare benefits to members of council and amending codified ordinance section one sixty-one twenty C by removing it.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law ordinance number three, two thousand and fourteen, please.
Second. I need a second, thank you. Vote call.
I'm sorry, I did not hear the second.
Dave.
Dave, thank you.
Ms. Darrow.
No.
Mr. Engel.
No.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes, I'm going to say yes, and I'd just like to make a comment about the vote. I have, last year I opposed to passing healthcare for the council because they're part-time, and none of our part-time employees receive healthcare. If we're talking about fairness to the employees and setting the example, I think we need to repeal healthcare, so this is a yes for me.
Mr. Molnar.
No.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number three dash two thousand fourteen fails. Ordinance number nine dash two thousand fourteen.
I'd like to offer ordinance number nine, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was still writing, I didn't read it yet, I'm sorry.
Okay, you didn't read it.
Yeah, I was, I'm getting right. In ordinance appealing a clerical amendment to the collective bargaining contract with I A F F local thirty-nine forty-seven, and this is in regards to firefighters.
What's your pleasure, Sylvia?
I move we pass and post ordinance number nine, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Vote call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Ordinance number nine, two thousand fourteen passes. Just so everybody knows, the next couple of ordinances in this one had to do with wording changes within the union contracts that were negotiated and settled, but then upon going over them, we found a couple of things that needed to be updated. So this ordinance and the next two do that with our union contracts. Ordinance number ten dash two thousand fourteen.
I move we pa, excuse me, I move that we pass ordinance number ten, two thousand and four, offer it for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In ordinance approving a clerical amendment to the collective bargaining contract with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association.
And what's your pleasure, Sylvia?
I move, I move we pass and post ordinance number ten, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Vote call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Ordinance number ten, two thousand fourteen passes. Ordinance number eleven, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number eleven, two thousand fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In ordinance approving a clerical amendment to the collective bargaining contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, the Ohio Labor Council Incorporated, regarding all Macedonia police sergeants.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance number eleven, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Vote call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
All right, ordinance eleven, two thousand fourteen passes. We're going to move on to number twelve. Ordinance number twelve, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number twelve, two thousand fourteen, for first reading only by ti, by title only.
In ordinance approving the purchase, installation, and training package regarding fingerprint time clocks for use by certain employees from the time, oh, excuse me, from the Cleveland Time Clock and Service Company and repealing section one of ordinance nine, two thousand and thirteen.
And what's your pleasure?
Oh, it was just first reading.
I'm sorry. All right, moving on to ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand twelve.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Thank you very much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Vote call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin.
No.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
You want to read it?
Oh, yes, that would be the next step.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry about that.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Macedonia occupancy program agreement with the American Light Metals LLC doing business as Empire Die-Casting Company.
And what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I move we pass and post according to law ordinance thirteen, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Vote call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes, and I'd like to explain the reason that I voted against going one, two, three. On these substantive issues like this, I believe we should allow the public to weigh in on any kind of major expenditure like this, so, but I think it's a good idea that we have this company, and it's a good idea they're staying here, I just thought we ought to have additional readings. Thank you.
Mr. Molnar.
I know in the past, we, I was very adamant about going for three readings on all MOP agreements. In this scenario, and I think we've kind of changed our way of thinking with this, because in this scenario, the company needs to have this done in order to move forward with a lot of the financial problems that they were having, so I vote yes.
And Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand fourteen passes. This is good news, because Empire Die-Casting is our fourth-largest company. They do, they pay a tremendous amount of city income tax, payroll tax, all the things that they do to support this city, and they almost left. And then at the last moment, we had a hero sweep down, get on the scene, and now we have moved forward to help them to make this happen and retain, how many jobs, Bob? Two hundred and twenty?
About two hundred.
About two hundred jobs. So, thank you very much, council, for this, and good luck with your new venture, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. Ordinance number fourteen dash two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number fourteen for its first reading by title only.
A resolution confirming the conditional use zoning certificate approval issued, conditional use zoning certificate approval issued by the Planning Commission regarding Longwood Manor at sixteen thirty-four East Roro Road.
And what's your pleasure?
It's first reading.
I'm sorry. Moving on to resolution number fifteen dash two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I, oh, sorry.
A resolution, excuse me, a resolution appointing Ken Martin to the Planning Commission in order to fill a recent vacancy.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we, we, we pass and post or, resolution number fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, according to law.
Second.
Vote call.
Mr., Ms. Darrow.
No.
Mr. Engel.
No.
Ms. Hannekin.
No.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Resolution number fifteen, two thousand and fourteen fails. Resolution number sixteen, two thousand and fourteen.
I'd like to offer resolution number sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution acknowledging and approving the Director of Finance to file on behalf of the City of Macedonia a grant for financial assistance from the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources under the recreational trails program for the revitalization of Longwood Park.
And what's your pleasure?
Before I offer it, could we just have a brief synopsis for those folks who were not in the work session?
Very good. Scott, this is yours, and please explain what a great thing you're doing.
This is a federal matching grant, eighty-twenty, and they award that up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it's for, this one would be for the resurfacing and restoration of the existing trail on Longwood Park. Hopefully, we're going to put it on a crushed asphalt base, a crushed as, a crushed limestone base, two inches, and then maybe top off most of it, if not all of it, with asphalt, make it ADA, compliance with a big turnaround, and try to get the trails back up into there with the proper signage and maybe some resting areas, so I want to thank everyone. We had John Doyle from Parks, from the Rec Department assisting with us, and Jim Diglatano, we're going to get flyby and get some aerial shots of the park, and so it's a collaborative effort of everyone involved, and if we don't receive it, we're going to be prepared for the next round, and with the goal of this council to try to get our parks, at least a trail section of it, a little bit better shape.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd move that we pass and post according to law resolution number sixteen, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Vote call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes, I think this is really exciting, and I'd like to thank Scott for taking the lead on this. This is great if we can get this grant.
Ms. Hannekin.
Yes, and let me second that, I think it's a great thing, and I appreciate what Scott and Angela have done to get this going, so.
Ms., Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
We've tried this years ago, we got so far, we got stopped, so I'm glad to see it's back on the table, and when it's done, I hope to see more than myself out there on the trail. One of the things I've asked for is to make sure it's ADA accessible, with a lot of people who would love to use it, that need to have some, just a little bit more, well, I need the assistance at times too, you know? We all have needs that we need to take care of, but to get everybody out in the fresh air. Angela and I have already talked about a few plans if we get it done, you know, there's a lot we can do with this, so I appreciate the vote of council, the ideas of bringing it back to fruition, and wish you good luck on the grant and that we get the money, and so absolutely, yes.
All right, resolution sixteen, two thousand and fourteen passes. So, nothing's for sure, but we're going to try, and just the fact that we're trying is more than we've done in years, so that's a good thing. Now, are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening? Correspondents from the clerk?
I have none, sir.
Well, we're really whizzing along here, and since my mayor's report is not in my briefcase, let me wing it.
Win on the short side, mayor.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be on the short side, for sure. It's a very important thing tonight that I discuss, the possibility of Macedonia getting sixty thousand dollars. How would we get that sixty thousand dollars? It all has to do with the Roxxino. The Roxxino and Walton Hills, actually, Northfield Park and Walton Hills had an agreement for years, actually thirty-five percent of the oval racetrack, that is, the harness racetrack, is in Walton Hills. So Walton Hills would regularly get thirty-five percent of the profit. Well, now comes the Roxxino. Marlene Anilski used to be the mayor of Walton Hills. She is now a state representative. When the casinos are brought into a community, that community gets money from the casinos and from the state, and the money from the state boils down to a million dollars. Lots of money. So Walton Hills wanted thirty-five percent of that million dollars. Why aren't they going to get it now? They got it, actually, the fact that they get thirty-five percent of the harness racing profits is by Ohio state law, so they are entitled to thirty-five percent. That is the contention of Kevin Hurst, who's the mayor of Walton Hills, because Macedonia owns a little strip of land way back by the railroad tracks, it's actually only six percent of the total area, that would make us eligible for six percent of a million dollars, or sixty thousand dollars. They had a hearing on Tuesday in Columbus before the Committee on Local Governments that is discussing this resolution by Mrs. Anilski. I was there, you better believe I was there, I'll drive down to Columbus anytime for sixty thousand. Kevin Hurst was there, and also Jesse Nihas was there, from Northfield. So here you have a little bit of a dilemma. You have Jesse saying, my community is poor, we should get all the money. You have Kevin Hurst saying, we should get thirty-five percent of the money, and you have Mayor Cookta, who said, do you know if you put the Roxxino in your GPS, just about from anywhere, they tell you to get off at two seventy-one and eighty-two in Macedonia? Do you know if you come from the south, you're going to be going through Macedonia? Do you know if you come through on the west, at least the Northfield Road, you're in Macedonia? I think it's fair and equitable that we get sixty thousand dollars. Why am I so adamant on that? Because long before the Roxxino was built, I had dinner with Jesse and Kevin Hurst, and we talked, and I said, you know, Jesse, there's a lot of people in Macedonia who feel, what's in it for us? We are going to be perhaps inconvenienced with more traffic, encumbered by more mutual aid, what's in it for us? You know what, Jesse? I think it would be a very nice gesture for them to give Macedonia a police car. The cost of a police car is about thirty thousand. And they said, well, okay, let's do that, you know, that would be very nice. Well, guess what? It never happened. And since that time now, we have new police cars. This is a good, good thing. When you're before a committee of the House of Representatives, you also have to answer questions when you're done testifying. The questions that they asked were questions like, Kevin, do you have any plans in Walton Hills to do anything for traffic or for roads? Nope. Jesse, do you have anything going on for traffic or for roads? Nope. Mayor Cookta, do you have anything? You better believe it. Because of our fear, because of the buses that will be on eighty-two coming from four eighty, or going back from the Roxxino, we are moving the ramp at a cost of five hundred thousand possibly to the City of Macedonia. I think it would be fair and equitable to get sixty thousand dollars that would go towards that purchase, and nobody else had anything that they could say that was that definite. So basically, that's what happened, and you'll see it in the papers, now you know a little more, you hear it right from me. I think that the three mayors agree to disagree without being disagreeable. I'm not going to fight with Jesse or with Kevin, but I am going to fight for my city and say, we deserve part of that money. Will I say it tomorrow, you better believe it, I'll say it over and over and over again, because I think it's just and fair. It's not like we're taking all the money away from Northfield, no we aren't. Sixty thousand against a million? That's not bad at all. This morning, I had breakfast with our congressman, Congressman Dave Joyce. Dave Joyce is going to be a great congressman. We had Congressman Steve Lotarette. Steve Lotarette is probably the single reason that we have the Route eighty-two bridge, the Highland Road Bridge, that we have Route eight and two seventy-one all straightened out. That man was always there for us. Well, guess what? Dave Joyce is just like him. That concludes my report, I hope it wasn't too long, and I hope I didn't ramble too much.
When will you have an answer?
The answer is going to be slow, yeah. Sometimes, here, the most we can do is three readings, but the legislation is before committee, it can stay in committee for months, all right? So our hope would be that this gets resolved very quickly, and I have been in contact already today with the chairman of the committee, asking him if there's anything I can do to help them to make this decision. Then, it comes out of committee, and it goes to the floor for the House of Representatives. It may pass, it may not. Then, it goes before the Senate. Then, it goes before the governor. So you have all these steps, so we might be waiting, maybe if we get interest on that sixty thousand, we'll get six million by the time we get it. So I will be keeping on that as much as I can, but it's a very slow process in Columbus. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
No? All right, moving on to committee reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, January twelfth, at our Planning Commission meeting, we, we talked about B four zoning amendment, and we also had Original Mattress Factory propose signage, and also Sally Beauty Supply, a replacement sign. Our next planning meeting will be Monday, February tenth, at five thirty.
Thank you, Rita. Any other committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to give a report on Longwood Manor. In December, they replaced the gutters and downspout, and they are now working with the Building Department for construction plans for upgrading electric, to get the electric turn on. The Manor Committee has been, have been having great progress at the Manor House, and I appreciate all their work, and I wanted everybody to know that, what they've been doing of recent.
Thank you, Dave. Right now, at this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Nick Molnar to update us. Councilman Nick Molnar did a great thing. He brought legislation before this body to say to Cleveland in so many words, what the heck are you doing to us? And we got results. We actually had a meeting, and I'll let Nick tell you all about it, but again, thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Mayor. Essentially, what had happened was the Clear Reads that are being installed in most of our homes, it's required by Cleveland Charter, and it's part of our contract where you have to have that installed in your home. What people are experiencing, and I experienced myself, was they installed the unit into my home, and I got a bill that was four times what my normal bill was. Upon calling their customer service line, I've got every excuse from you have an underground leak, you need to call a plumber, one meter was reading inside, the outside wasn't reading the same, so basically got the runaround. I know a lot of people had experienced the same problem, so talking with the mayor, we got the director of Clear Reads to come out, Paul Bender, sat down with Sylvia, the mayor and I, and we had a conversation as to why that was happening. Found out there were some inconsistencies. They are going to do everything they can at this point to resolve any problems. He has committed to us that if you call their customer service and you do not get resolved with the problem with your bill, you can call him directly at his office. His number is two one six, six six four, two four four zero, and his name is Paul Bender. He has, again, committed to us that if you cannot get resolved, he will work with you. If there's any problems after that or within that, the mayor or myself or anyone on council can definitely help with it, so I think we've made a lot of headway and curbed the problem. I know there's a lot of reports on the news where people getting bills that were a thousand dollars and are only getting resolved when the media took attention to it, so I think that may have been the same thing that occurred here, but I think it's a, it's a good thing to resolve that problem. Once again, the number is two one six, six six four, two four four zero, and his name is Paul Bender.
Sylvia, do you have anything there?
No, I just think we, we did a service to everybody, we did talk to Mr. Bender, there was actually three representatives there, and Mr. Bender was the lead. The thing that I thought that, as I listened to it, is they were convinced that they really didn't have a problem, and I think we persuaded him that maybe they really do have a problem, and they became much more accommodating towards what we have to have done for our residents, which is if there is a problem, it gets resolved. So I'd like to be at the meeting, and I enjoyed it.
Mr. Molnar, you might mention he's the director.
Yes, he, he's the director of Clear Reads, so.
So they're going right to the top.
Head honcho.
He's head honcho at the whole implementation, and actually, he reports to the mayor.
It was definitely reassuring when a director gives you his direct line, so if you have a problem, I feel that he's going to work with us to resolve it.
It's absolutely amazing, though, no matter who you're meeting with, there's nothing wrong with our service.
Right, exactly.
There's nothing wrong with that bridge. That's all you ever hear from the big bureaucrats, there's nothing wrong with anything. Right. Wrong, and we took steps to fix it. Thank you. Thank you, Sylvia. All right, next, we're going to go on to department reports, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. The Service Department's been busy with this, the way winter's been going with the extreme cold, the snow, the ice, so we've been pretty busy with that, and also very busy with cold patching. In the last three weeks, when we've been able to do it, we laid down over twenty tons. And this winter, because of this extreme cold, is really going to, it's going to cause a lot of problems on our roads, because of, it's causing more cracking, more potholes popping up, and so it's something we're going to have to look at in the spring, because some of these roads are really getting bad. And also, I hate to bring up. And also, I hate to bring up leaves, but the warm days we had, we were able to really catch up. And we're down finally until this weather got cold again. We have three main roads to do and then we're finished. Thank you. And I just want everybody to know, so we don't get phone calls or anything else that, or if anybody should call you, we are going to do restoration in the spring. We always do. And if anybody has a problem, just call our office, give us your address, your name, and we will take care of it for you. Basically, that's what's going on Mayor. Cold, cold patching and trying to keep our buildings up. That's what the Service Department's doing.
And we have had problems with the heating system in this building, so thank you for all that you've done.
We have prices on all that to get done and that's in our budget.
I think you're on top of it. Thank you. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've done five plan reviews for five new houses already this year and we had a couple of inquiries about a vacant building, a part of a vacant building and also one of the vacant lots in the B1 district.
And you're going to meet with me tomorrow morning?
Correct.
And we're going to meet with somebody that was talking about a hospice?
Right.
That's good stuff. Angela?
Thank you Mayor. We will be hosting a first-time fundraiser at the Recreation Center on Saturday, February 8th, after hours, in partnership with the Emergency Assistance Center. We're hosting a polar plunge, so it's going to be $25 to participate. It funds, the money goes towards funding local programs that the Emergency Assistance Center provides locally in this community to those in need of food, of clothing and toiletry items, things of that nature. So we will be opening all of the doors in the pool area, dropping the temperature somewhat so it won't be as drastically cold as if you were to jump in a lake or something outdoors, but we're going to mock that as closely as we can. So it should be a fun event. We'll have a live DJ, we'll have food and it, like I said, it starts after hours on that evening. So I invite people to come out and participate or even just to come out and watch because it is for a good cause. The next day, Sunday, February 9th, from 5 to 7, in addition to our daddy-daughter dance, we're also adding a mother-son dance and this is for children 5 through 12 years old. This was a big hit last year, so we're hoping for a big turnout this year as well. We are still currently accepting registrations for spring soccer program. We're accepting them through March 1st. This is for boys and girls 4 through 14 years of age. So to avoid any late fee, you know, we encourage everyone to register by March 1st. Lastly, with the capital dollars that were allocated last year for the Recreation Center, the last few projects that we were spending money on have been completed. We replaced all the gutters on the exterior of the facility, so hopefully no one will see gigantic icicles this year that they're worried are going to fall on them. And our side yard should no longer be flooded when it rains during the spring and summer. So those are very, very positive things. And lastly, the money we were able to purchase new equipment with is being delivered next Friday. That was ordered several months ago. So we have several, several pieces of new cardio equipment coming in, which is very exciting. And I think that just about concludes the replacement of all of our cardio equipment that was original to the building. So we finally completed that and hopefully with that money next year, you know, we'll focus on the weight room and replacing a lot of the equipment that needs upgraded in our weight room.
So is the mayor going to do the polar plunge? Is that the plan?
I don't know. I don't know. We might have to have a...
There's a challenge. The Emergency Assistance Center is a wonderful, wonderful charity. The executive director is Joyce Hunt, who is a great person.
Yes.
It's really exciting to hear that you're helping support it. And I would say that I would do it, except I'm just getting over the cold I had for about a month, so.
Well, mayors are usually in hot water.
I see that.
Angela, just real quick, you've done such a spectacular job getting ready for our summer event and you could probably talk about that for the next 10 minutes, but could you give us a minute update, maybe?
Sure. My staff and I have been working, you know, on the preliminary planning for this event. The dates are June 5th through the 8th. Our amusement ride company that we decided on, that contract has been with the law department, so they're firming that up and adding all of the, you know, language that needs to be added in there because there's a lot of it. We've been talking to sponsors. We have been talking to our entertainers. We have our site plan drawn out. We've got food concessions, games. We've got eight to 20 of the large amusement rides coming in. We did relocate that to the front parking lot of the rec center, so it will be in a slightly different location. We're firming up, gosh, we've got our nonprofit organizations' commitments coming in to be involved. I'm trying to think. There's so many things.
Yeah, I put you on the spot, but you've done so much. Thank you. All right, to make this happen. All right, Scott?
Thank you Mayor. What she failed to report on was the fishing derby and I was just trying to look up the date. I think it's February 17th. It says Saturday.
Yes.
And from 1 to 3 o'clock at the rec center, an ODNR grant that we got last year is going to have kids 10 and under come out and learn a little bit about fishing and also get a free fishing pole and a casting plug that they can then cast into the pool and learn how to cast. And then we'll have another event in March with the same format. And then our big event will be in June, the day before Father's Day, which we did last year, where it'll be in Longwood Park where kids can come out, get a fishing pole, tackle box, learn how to fish for, they could stay the whole day and have a lunch also. So we wanted to split some times with the extended grant this year and offer some recreation in the winter months and where kids might be bored or anybody and come out and get a free pole, learn how to at least cast it and then get ready for our big June kickoff. And so we have registration on there. It's on our website and we hope to get both of those classes filled. And speaking with the rec center, we did have a, because our income tax up, it was up this year generally, overall, we had a record year in an increase of over 10%, which is $790,263 compared to 2012. And for the month of December, we were 3.66% increase in revenue and that was mainly attributed to withholding accounts. The total $790,000 for the whole year, which we received, when I broke it down, the net profits from companies attributed to approximately 50% of that increase and 25% from withholders and remaining from the individual taxpayers. Macedonia experienced a record collection, but unfortunately, in January 2014, we're going to, the quarter percent is going off, so the increase, the tax base rate will be 2% with 100% credit. That was restored four years ago. Rita has predicted there'll be a decrease in revenue collections by $1.3 million. And this decrease, along with the elimination of the inheritance tax that was imposed by the state and the state local government funding that's been reduced in the last three years, will create a loss of over $1.6 million to our general fund. Interesting though, we, I had some Rita analysis that I was breaking down. I had some old reports that when we were looking at this previously last year, in the tax year 2011, there were 7,992 returns filed in Macedonia. Rita estimates that there are 7,500 individuals working in the city of Macedonia. From that 7,500 individuals, only 1,500 are residents. So there exists a significant proportion of people that work in Macedonia and live elsewhere that contribute to our income tax. And out of the, breaking it down further, out of those 7,992 returns, 1,839 of those residents, they actually work in a municipality that charges 2.25%. So if council ever decides or we move forward and revisit that 2.25%, those people, which is almost 20% of it, actually it's 23%, they would not see an increase in taxes with 100% credit. So there's definitely going to be a revenue hole and it's not going to be business as usual. Council has done the last three years since I've been here, a great job of getting things done in capital expenditures, but also with recognizing that that fund purposely was going to sunset. And we got to move forward now and try to, you know, possibly decrease in capital expenditures or program cuts to try to achieve a balanced budget that everyone's going to shoot forward to. With that bump of income tax though, because the quarter percent also goes to the rec center, just very briefly, it was amazing that her expenditures almost matched last year's for 2012. In fact, the only difference, which was I think $40,000 more, was the $40,000 more that was appropriated for the capital improvements. So she was pretty flat on expenditures, almost matching everything. But the good news, because of that bump in increase in income tax, her fund grew from the beginning year balance in the rec center, $1,023,000, and ended unexpended balance of $1,143,000. However, Councilman Nick Monar, with our encumbrances of $43,000, she still did have a surplus of $1,098, which was $70,000 more if she fulfills those encumbrances with the capital items that she was going to, she just mentioned to purchase. So overall, the rec center, and I have a five-year forecast from that, it's healthy and for what it's going to be, you know, the projections in the next couple of years. And as that income tax actually sunsets, another quarter percent rolls off in 2017 when this building, the safety building and our rec center bond gets paid off. So I mean, we've got some bright lights as far as retiring debt. We've been retiring debt at a steady rate and meeting all those requirements. Our general fund balance started with $2,513,000 and it ended, unexpended balance, $3,278, encumbrances of $188,300,000. So we actually increased our general fund balance by $750,000 this year. And our overall funds, we started with $6.2 million and ended, unexpended, Nick, $7.8, which was an increase and that's what the auditors look at, at a $1.6 million. And some of that money was attributed to transfers from the general fund into the capital items fund at the end of the year. So those were part of the appropriations, so there's some money sitting in the capital funds for future projects. And so, I mean, we, I'm happy with the situation we're in. I want to thank council for, you know, the last three years have been good. I mean, we're riding the increase wave along with the economy is rebounding. I mean, you can segregate that 10% because that 2.25 was in effect last year and nothing but economic gain to finalize that 10%. So we'll be going into more detailed discussions in the next week or so as we meet with the finance committees and try to hammer out some permanent budget by the state guideline of March 31st.
Scott, do you feel we're ready for a meeting? Should one be scheduled? I mean, year-end stuff and so forth?
I mean, there's, I'm speaking with the finance chair. I mean, I'm going to have some stuff prepared for her if she wants to move on. I mean, we can talk briefly and then schedule the following week. I've been tied up with, you know, end-of-year closures, 1099s getting put out and actually starting some prep work for the auditor. So, I mean, I can be prepared. It's whatever.
Right. Well, let's have a look at it Scott and then we can all call a meeting.
Okay, absolutely.
All right, thank you Scott.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any more fishing?
No.
All right, Tim?
Mayor, I had the honor of going to the grand opening ribbon cutting this morning for the Tesla Supercharger that we have down. It's just inside the parking lot outside Hobby Lobby. That's going to go into developer diversified their shopping plazas. They own 450 shopping plazas across the United States. They've teamed up with Tesla to put in the supercharging stations. It is the only one in the state of Ohio at this time. Tesla is a premium electric car that you can drive across the United States at no cost. You pull into those centers, they have a electrical hookup. You hook it up to the car. The turbo takes about 20 minutes to fully charge a car. At home, off your regular home electric, it's about four hours. But as they drive across the United States or drive, they plug into those and in about 20 minutes, they fully charge the car. We were very happy. We worked with them. We looked at it almost like a gas station. We do have a switch that we can throw and shut off all the power if we have any problems. So if you see people sitting down there in the parking lot hooked up to an electric line, they're charging their cars. Probably not going to go out in this weather to go to many stores while they're there, talking to some of the owners that were down there today. But of course, when the weather gets nice, they'll be going to the local restaurants while their cars charge up, so.
Good stuff. Thank you.
That's all I have Mayor.
Appreciate that. All right, next we have Sergeant McClellan. I don't know if he's been introduced properly, so I'd like to do that now. Aaron is one of our best and thank you for coming in place of John tonight, Aaron. Do you have any report?
Thank you Mayor. No report from the police department.
All right, thank you. Nick?
Thank you Mayor. No, nothing major to report on. I just wanted to mention, one item was the state infrastructure bank application that the city had presented to ODOT was approved. So the right-of-way acquisition portion of the project is moving forward. So we'll report back as that develops.
Every single day, there's something they want right now.
Yes.
That project is on such a fast track, it's almost that we can't keep up getting the stuff as fast as they want it. There's a lot to be done. There's a lot that has been done for the project already, but I just wanted you to reiterate that everything with that project is right now.
All right, fast track is definitely not an exaggeration and hopefully when it gets to construction, it goes as quickly as it does during the planning stages.
All right, thank you. I think I need to say here that they'll be working on 271 and that new ramp this coming year and that is kind of like a company moving into town because all those construction workers pay us city income tax, so that's a good thing. Joe?
Along that same line, Mayor, I just reviewed and approved the ODOT request for our approval of the 10 feet from Memorial Park. It will be used to widen 82 as part of this on-ramp change, so they needed our service director to sign off. I've just approved it, so it's like every hour there's something going on.
Always, just fast.
That's all I have Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, is there any unfinished business? Any new business? We have scheduled an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and invite the law director to attend and we will not conduct any business after the executive session is adjourned.
Second?
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hannigan?
Yes.
Mr. Monar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right folks, so for tonight, thank you very much for coming. We might be in that session for a while.
Sure.
Thank you.